To start this meeting, April 6th and bring it to order. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
House Membershippers? Here. Allen Bass?
Here.
Engels?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Falcone?
Here.
This time, if we could have an approval of motion for the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. This is TI.
I second it.
If, if I could, I'm not sure if this is the right spot to do it. Are we, with the approval of this, my tablet's giving me a problem. Are we also putting the agenda from the last meeting?
No, it's under the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll wait then. Good.
Sandy?
Brian? House, House Member Allen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Right.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
First?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes, motion carries.
This time, we'll open the floor, the first public comment. We do ask if you would like to comment today, that you would state your name, and that you limit your time to three minutes. Hearing no one, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our last meeting on March 16th, our regular meeting, along with the minutes from our closed session on March 16th.
And the only point on that one, in a look to the mayor and our purpose for direction, where it says Council absent King, I think we just need to amend hyphen and put the time that I joined next to that, so if someone's reviewing the minutes, they know that I did come into the meeting at that point.
We, we can absolutely do that, and Mayor, members of the City Council, when you make your motion for approval, can simply make the motion to approve it as stated by Councilmember King.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion to approve the agenda amended as stated by Councilmember King.
Support.
I can ask.
The consent agenda.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
Yes.
King?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. It takes us to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first item this evening under the city manager's report is an update regarding the coronavirus or COVID-19. I, I do have a lot of information I'd like to share, and I'll try to, try to do it as quick of a manner as I can. Under the stay home, stay safe executive order from our governor, there are a few things that have been summarized that I thought it would be important just to reiterate publicly. So, you, you can go to the grocery store or pick up takeout food. You can go to the pharmacy to pick up a needed prescription. You can engage in outdoor recreational activities, like walking, hiking, running, biking, and boating. You can go to the hospital or security necessary care to address a medical emergency or to preserve your health or the health of a loved one. You can fill your car with gas. You can return to Michigan to a home or a place of residence from outside the state. You can leave the state for a home or residence elsewhere. You can walk your pets and take them to the veterinarian for needed medical care. However, here are some things that you may not do. You may not leave the home to work unless your employer designates you as a critical infrastructure worker. You may not participate in any public gatherings. You may not visit someone in the hospital, nursing home, or other residential care facilities, and there are some limited exceptions. You may not go to the shopping mall or dine in at restaurants. Businesses that are open for in-person work also must take a host of aggressive steps to minimize the spread of the virus, and I'll probably mention it a couple of times at least, but I would encourage everyone to visit michigan.gov/coronavirus or cdc.gov/coronavirus for more detailed information. Additionally, there is a COVID-19 hotline that is 888-535-6136, and that number is available between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. daily. There is also a new press release that went out just this afternoon after there was some wonderful collaboration that the city participated in over the weekend recently. A host of local community leaders and agencies have been collaborating regarding our strategies against the coronavirus in an effort to provide coordinated assistance regarding the reporting of concerns. A phone line and email address have been created for citizens to submit questions, concerns, and complaints. This effort's been spearheaded by our Wexford County Prosecutor, and in collaboration with the county District Health Department Number 10, the City of Cadillac, and our law enforcement and emergency services, we truly hope that this call-in line and email address will provide an additional opportunity for people to communicate with us during this very unprecedented time. Note that, that if you should call in or send an email, you know, you're not going to get legal advice coming back. However, you know, that information that, that does come in, you know, will be shared and received between the agencies, so that good feedback can go back to people that are calling in, even if it's just to, to direct you to available resources for you to follow up with. The hotline email or the hotline number also, you know, may not necessarily be able to answer every single question that comes in, but, but yet, this is just another, another opportunity to make an effort of trying to provide another resource for people here in Wexford County and certainly in Cadillac. The email address is covid19, C-O-V-I-D-19, at wexfordcounty.org, and the hotline number where voicemails can be left is 231-942-7651. And regardless of the method used, we ask that you provide your name, return contact information, obviously what your question, concern, or complaint is. The line and the email will be monitored throughout the day, and information or response will be provided as soon as, as soon as possible. Additionally, folks can find some really good information locally through our Regional District, District Health Department Number 10 website, which is www.dhd10.org, and at monsonhealthcare.org, the hospital site. You'll also find some really, really relevant information. Regarding, in a sense, more closer to home, City of Cadillac operational updates. I think as, as most everybody knows, we are still closed in terms of public access, physical public access to our facilities. Most recently, however, there have been some service changes regarding refuse and yard waste. Right now, Republic, our hauler, they will accept cart contents only. Drivers are not being authorized by Republic to, to necessarily leave their vehicle to pick up outside, waste outside of the cart, if you actually have a Republic cart. For folks that don't have the Republic cart but are rather using their own personal, personally owned carts, the request is actually to make sure everything is bagged. Bags cannot exceed 50 pounds, and to just simply place the bagged refuse at the curb. Yard waste and bulk waste programs are currently suspended. Residential yard waste, in-paper yard waste bags, however, can be brought to our city's Public Works Facility that's located at the corner of 6th and 8th Streets between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There are signs out there, and they do direct folks where to go. Basically, there's a couple of roll-off dumpsters in the back of the facility. So, once you get to the Public Works Facility, just drive through the fence line, and around back, you'll find the proper place to, to dump your yard waste. As soon as the, as soon as we kind of get through the other side of the pandemic, I'm sure the yard waste curb site pickup will, will resume. In regard to conducting other business with the city, we still have information available on our website, which is www.cadillac-mi.net. Also, people can call in to our automated line, which is 231-775-0181. On the website, however, you'll find access to what we call our Report a Problem or Fix It Reporting System, where folks can use the drop-down, select-a-box, in a sense, listing that it has to report almost anything, and if whatever it is that you're trying to report is not in that list, you can just click Other, and then advise us what, what it is that you'd like to tell us. Also, you can download applications and permits and everything that, that you would normally do in person, you can, you can do digitally. It's been like this for quite a while, but, but just reinforcing that point. If you want to see a, a public meeting and you don't have Charter Spectrum cable, you can go to the Cadillac Community Television website, and you can watch replays of all of our public meetings in addition to a lot of other local programming. We also have a drop-off box. We sent out another news release today, including a picture of where the drop-off box is located. The drop-off box is located in our main parking lot. There is a sign on it indicating that it's a drop-off box, along with an orange flag. You can get out of your car, or you can literally use it as a drive-through and deposit utility bills or applications or anything that you need to get to us can go through that box as well. And I would definitely, definitely encourage people to, to use that. As far as other local resources, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the landing page that the Cadillac Visitors Bureau has put up. It's, it's, it's really, really a cool site. CadillacMichigan.com is their main page. CadillacMichigan.com/covidupdates takes you to the page I'm referring to. On that site, you could find information regarding the Small Business Owner's Guide to the Federal Cares Act. You could find a legal viewpoint on Michigan's Stay Home, Stay Safe Order, information on lodging, retail, and other business statuses. So, as a, for instance, if you're looking to find what area or local businesses are still open for takeout, you can find that information there. Information regarding local food pantry is there as well, along with USDA Rural Support for Residents, Businesses, and Communities link. So, there's, there's really a lot of good information that the Visitors Bureau is maintaining. I do have an update from our local District Health Department 10 regarding the virus as of 4 o'clock this afternoon. They sent out correspondence advising that globally there are just a little over 1.3 million cases, just under 74,000 fatalities, and a little over 275,000 people have recovered from, from the virus. And the source of that information is Johns Hopkins University. Nationally in the United States, there's been just, just over 330,000 confirmed cases, just under 9,000 deaths, with over 300,000 cases currently still under investigation. In Michigan, there have been 17,200 cases that have tested positive for COVID-19 with currently 727 fatalities. That information, again, is available through the state web portal, michigan.gov/coronavirus. The District 10 Health Department also has even a further breakdown, and they do represent several counties. They represent Crawford, Calcasas, Lake Manistee, Mason, Macosta, Mesaki, Nuego, Oceana, and Wexford Counties. As of, again, 4 o'clock today, within their region, there's a total of 34 positive COVID-19 patients with five fatalities within that, that whole, that whole region. They have, again, a lot of information on their website, which is www.dhd10.org, or on Facebook at facebook.com/dhd10. And I would really, really encourage everyone to, to visit those sites for some good, up-to-date information. And I also want to stress, too, that, you know, there are some stats that you'll find out there regarding, you know, the, the age groups and whatnot of who's getting the, the virus, but, you know, it is, it is affecting everyone. The current breakdown that I have, that I received last week shows from highest to lowest, 20% of the, the positive diagnoses are going to folks that are between 50 to 59 years old, 19%, 60 to 69%, 17%, 40 to 49%, 14%, 70 to 79%, 13%, 30 to 39%, 9%, 20 to 29%, 8%, 80 years or older, and then 1% between 0 and 19 years of age. So, you know, it, it, this is a situation where it is, you know, affecting everyone regardless, regardless of age groups. But I just wanted to get that update out there. The city does have some of these links also on its website, where you will find information about our operational updates as well. But I thought that this is our first council meeting since we've been, you know, in this sort of full lockdown mode, and I would take the time this evening to provide a more detailed, a detailed update. Otherwise, as we look at moving things forward, I will continue to just suggest that people go visit our website or those of the other local agencies. Are there any questions or anything regarding that update?
Yes, can I? I do. Can you hear me okay? This is TI. Can you hear me? Can you hear me or no? Okay, so, my question is with the stay home, stay safe, and going out for recreation, I've heard a few people mention that there are children in the playgrounds, and that there are groups of children in the playground with multiple families. What's the guidelines for that?
So, that's, that's a great, that's a great question, and I, and I appreciate you asking it. So, I think that it's important that folks know that gathering in, in groups outside of your household, you know, is something that you should not be doing, whether it's at a playground, at a grocery store, or, or anywhere, even, you know, even in a park. You need to be basically away from other people and only with the people that, that you're living with under your roof. Our parks are currently still open, and they're still currently available for people to, to use. However, if when approaching the park, you see that there are a handful of other people already there, the advice would be to, to not visit it, but rather to either keep walking down the trail or perhaps to go to another park. You know, the other, you know, the other sort of tidbit of information just regarding going out and, and visiting the recreation areas is that, you know, the amount of, of travel that the state is trying to get people to, to not do really is along the lines of trying to kind of keep yourself local. So, you know, if you have access to recreational outlets locally, you know, you shouldn't be driving necessarily to the U.P., you know, to go, to go walk around a state park that's there. You know, this is a very fluid, a very ever-changing situation and dynamic. And while, you know, today, our, you know, playground facilities are open, certainly we might, we might need to look at restricting access pending, you know, how this continues to evolve if folks aren't able to essentially self-police themselves. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up.
All right. Brian, do you have a question? Okay, all right. So, moving, moving along as I just get to the next item in the, into the, into the agenda. Moving along, the next item in the agenda is a recommendation regarding the purchase of two plow truck chassis. Our current fiscal year 2020 annual operating budget, along with the proposed fiscal year 21 budget, both include an appropriation for the purchase of a single-axle plow truck. These purchases are to replace the oldest two trucks in the frontline snow maintenance fleet that we currently have. Once these trucks are received and deployed in the fleet, all five of our main trucks will be four seasons old or less. Competitive bids were solicited, and the following bids were received. One from Grand Traverse Diesel for Western Stars at $226,000, and one from JX Truck Center for Peterbilt's at $237,998,000. The last three trucks that we've placed in service have been the Western Star trucks. Having a uniform fleet does provide us with additional efficiencies, especially regarding maintenance, as it increases our familiarity with the manufacturer, as opposed to needing to also be familiar with multiple manufacturers. There is, as we had talked about as a part of our work session earlier this evening, a four- to five-month lead time to take delivery of these vehicles. Once they're received, then there's another month or two, at least, to install the necessary snow maintenance equipment itself. The recommended action this evening is to move forward with the purchase of two single-axle plow truck chassis and to award it with respect to the Grand Traverse Diesel, the lower bidder, in the amount of $226,000. Funds are currently available in the Stores and Garage Fund. I and/or Owen can certainly, and I think Ken is also online as well. Ken, try to address any questions that you may have.
A quick question. Are we replacing one, or is this just adding to the fleet? Are we going to sell one of the old ones?
Yeah, this is a replacement. We have one backup, but, but these will be the five front lines, and then we'll sell one backup.
Oh, okay. It'll stay in, in shop then?
The, these trucks, you mean?
Yeah, the one that's being replaced will be a backup on the, in the garage.
Yeah, it's, it's, Ken, you want to jump on and just kind of give the, the details of that real quick?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
So, yeah, what it would be is we've got one extra one there that is a 2002 as a backup, and we're going to actually refurbish two of the trucks, the beds. And they're about a $40,000 savings that way per truck. And then we will have one, one spare one, yes.
Good. So, it'll stay in-house then?
Yep, yep, and then we'll, we will sell the other ones on a, on an auction site.
Okay. Where does that money go, Owen?
It helps provide the cash to offset the purchases.
There you go. Thank you.
Yep.
I, just, we were able to talk in the work session. My only concern is if it's an delay on big item spending. With the uncertainty, I don't know that we want to use our capital without giving it 60 days or 30 days just to see where we're at before we expend cash that we have.
Yes, I can respond to that. You know, I, I don't disagree that it's a difficult time to evaluate the, the importance and the need and the, you know, the desire to balance conservative cash outflow with not knowing what's going to come. You know, the thing that I would, would probably say is certainly operational dollars will be used to, to pass along the, to repay the funds for these. The, the funds are very, I guess, segregated as far as, you know, these are not general fund reserves that we're utilizing or, or other operational-type reserves that would really destroy our ability to continue to respond to what we need. And again, as we, as we kind of talked about briefly in the work session, just, I think the priority at this point for us of needing to get the, the update, updated equipment deployed so that we don't find ourselves in a situation, you know, where we have, you know, two 15- to 17-year-old trucks out there kind of on their last leg trying to provide major snow maintenance next winter season. You know, the, the source of these funds, some will be repaid from, from the, you know, selling of, of the trucks, which, you know, that's not a ton of money based on, you know, we're going to strip a lot of this stuff off of them to use. But, you know, we're not burning through funds that we could, you know, really appropriate for emergency purposes. That would typically be the general fund. But again, you know, it's, it is a balancing act, and we certainly, I think that's a, it's a very valid point in, in discussion. My personal feeling and recommendation from pretty extensive talks with, with Ken is, is I don't want to jeopardize our snow, you know, snow, snow's coming, you know, in nine months, eight months, no matter what, and I need us to be as ready as possible to respond, you know, to those, those significant events to come. And, and to me, this is the best way to do that, but I certainly, certainly under, understand the, the question. That would be my response from a financial perspective. If, if Ken wants to talk a little bit about, more about that detailed operation or operational impact of that, you know, Ken, you can weigh in if you want.
Yeah, just as an example, we, you know, the two older trucks that we had this winter at two different times, we actually had times where they were down for a snowy one. We had two snow events on one and one on the other. Basically, electronic issues that we're having and with the mechanical part of it. Obviously, the, the sander and stuff, we had issues with. It is nice to have the frontline stuff out there and not have to worry about it as much, for sure.
Let me add, I've been in the city garage before and watched Don take care of the plow trucks, and I know the extent of the beatings they take. It is a tough time to ask for that amount of money, but it's well needed and I'd have to agree with Ken in that.
Yeah, I have to say, I agree with the sentiment that Steve's saying and we should obviously apply that going forward. But a plow truck, to me, almost seems like at some point that might be an emergency management piece of equipment as well. So, I mean, I would say a yes on that.
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
Let's get to there.
I will.
Um, I understand.
Go ahead.
I'll support that.
Motion made by Engels and supported by T.I. Nice job.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Allenbach?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. Obviously, you know, apologize if this meeting feels a little clunky. I think that if we're still in this position, you know, two weeks and four weeks and whatnot down the road, it'll, we'll all get the hang of it a little bit better. But moving along, the next item in your agenda this evening for consideration is now the relevant snow maintenance equipment for those chassis. We did bid it out. We received one bid back from Truck and Trailer Specialties out of Boeing Falls, Michigan. And it is our recommendation to acquire this equipment as well in order to make the trucks themselves operational to do snow maintenance-related work. So, the recommendation is to acquire the equipment in the amount of $155,846 accordingly. There are funds available in the stores and garage fund for this.
Well, I only see one bid.
One bid, that's correct. And part of that, so were you reusing the box? And I, both boxes on these were refurbishing and a lot of that, it's Monroe equipment and Truck and Trailer is the place that has utilized that type of equipment. So, you know, they're kind of the local provider of that, but we did send it out competitively in case anyone else could respond to that bid. So, we did save, I think Ken mentioned, $20,000 per truck. Ken, go ahead and weigh in on that if I said anything wrong.
Yeah, it's roughly about $30,000 to refurbish the standard box on these. So, that last one that we had done, that was the first time we experienced a refurb. And we don't have to wait for the sander box to come in, the flight chain, the spinner, everything's all in one. By taking that off, it's quite the savings between the two and it gets the truck back to us faster, too.
And they're stainless steel, isn't it? So, there's no, you know, there's no issue as far as longevity or anything with doing it that way.
Um, okay. I will go ahead and make motion to award the purchase and installation.
I have the phone at this point, so I'll just clarify. T.I., you were in and out a little bit. Was that the motion? Can you, so, T.I., you were cutting in and out a little bit there. So, can you just confirm maybe with a thumbs up that that was the motion to approve? All right. Thank you.
We have support?
Looks like Brian, there he is, okay.
Brian?
Councilmember Schippers? Allenbach?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. So, now we move from plow trucks and snow winter maintenance to sludge pumps. So, the fiscal year 20 budget in our Water and Sewer Fund does include an appropriation currently of $30,000 for the replacement of two return activated sludge pumps or R.A.S. pumps at our wastewater treatment facility. We received three competitive bids for the pumps with the lowest bid going to Kennedy Industries in the amount of $18,870. And it is our recommendation this evening for the council to consider authorization to move forward with the R.A.S. pumps in that amount to Kennedy Industries utilizing our Water and Sewer Fund available monies. And I believe Jeff is on the line in case there's a detailed question about that particular device.
Ryan's mic's not on. Is he trying to talk or?
No, no, just looking at my other tablet.
I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to award the purchase of the return activated sludge pumps to Kennedy Industries in the amount of $18,870.
Councilmember Allenbach?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schippers? Mayor Falcone?
Yes, yes.
Okay, moving right along. Moving right along, we also have within our fiscal year 2020 budget in the Water and Sewer Fund, an appropriation of $25,000 for the replacement of the BioArea Make-Up Air Unit. That's a unit that's part of the mechanical system at the facility. We did receive competitive bids, three of them. And the recommendation this evening is to go, again, with the list to Advanced Mechanical and Electrical Service LLC in the amount of $24,391.40.
I will make that motion. Am I breaking up?
You're good.
But I'll make that motion as presented.
I'll second.
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Schippers? Allenbach?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And moving along, the next item for consideration has to do with the Rotary Pavilion sign upgrade. This is something that we've talked about sort of on and off over the last couple of years. The current fiscal year 20 operating budget includes an appropriation of $30,000 for the purchase and installation of an electronic message board insert that will significantly upgrade the informational sign that's currently at the Cadillac Rotary Pavilion facility. So, if you can picture the sign as it sits out there currently, the area where folks would have to go out and manually put in whatever the message is, that will, you know, quite frankly, get popped out. And then an electronic sign board of sorts will then get installed in its place. In fact, the image that you can now see is a rendering, generally speaking, of what that would look like. So, competitive bids were received. We did receive six of them. The low bidder, United Signs, is from out of state and provided no references for any work done in the state. The second low bidder offered a full five-year warranty on the sign, which is good, but local service will be an important part of this project and potential warranty work in the future. And as such, our recommendation is for Pro Image Design, Inc. to get the project. They bid $15,966. When discussing with Pro Image Design, Inc., they recommended that we look at a higher resolution sign for the project. The higher resolution will provide us with better images and colors, significantly enhance the appearance and the readability of the messaging, which is certainly something that we would want to do. The quote provided for this higher resolution was $19,992.20. Because of the additional resolution and quality of this upgrade, the 10-millimeter sign is the preferred solution for the project and it is still well within the available dollars that we budgeted since we had looked at a budget of $30,000. So, the recommendation this evening, again, to upgrade the Rotary Pavilion sign would be to award it to Pro Image Design, Inc. in the amount of $19,992.20 and funds are available in the general fund accordingly.
Couple comments, please. First of all, the sign that's there is in terrible condition. It's almost embarrassing. Agree with you, Marcus, about the taking the high bidder due to maintenance and taking care of it. One quick question, is this, where do you load the sign from? Does anybody know where? Usually, you punch in what you want on the sign from somewhere? Do you have any idea what it is?
My understanding is that you'll be able to do it remotely through an internet-type connection.
Ken, Ken is back.
Or Ken is back. I think he might be able to provide a clearer point.
Yeah, so the system is done. Oh, sorry. What's that?
Go ahead.
So, the system is done. It's cell phone-based, so we'll be able to change that through our phones. And we can do it, essentially, you can do it from anywhere with the phone service.
Good.
Badly needed.
Which saves any kind of router.
Good.
I'll just, I'll say again, I think it would be a beautiful upgrade to the community, but I don't think now is the time to spend those funds from general fund until we see what's really going to happen from all this.
Valid point, Steve.
Were those funds provided by the community foundation?
No, those are general fund dollars.
Okay, I'm sorry if I didn't hear that.
Yeah, no, these were dollars that were budgeted for when we went through the budgeting and adoption process last year. They're in your current year budget.
Is there a downside to waiting on this project?
Can you repeat that, Robert?
Is there a downside for waiting for this project or for yourself?
I mean, other than the operational efficiency of being able to provide an enhanced messaging and provide it very quickly to update it at a moment's notice, very quickly. Beyond that, you know, I don't know, you would just be taking the risk of what the pricing would do over the next few months. So, you know, this is one that was in the CIP for a few years and then, you know, and I get it, it is a very, you know, valid and fair point about the financing. You know, I think it's one of those when you're kind of enhancing your ability to message and the efficiency of your operations, that could be a consideration as well. Go ahead, Ken.
All right, just to point out now, it'd be nice to be able to change that on the fly as far as the COVID thing we've got going on. And, you know, there's not a lot of people on Facebook and there's a lot of people that travel down Lake Street, so we could get messages out there very fast for those people.
It's true.
You could say more. You could say more. You're not restricted to just, you know, there's kind of been some awkward abbreviations and the need to do some of that. You could provide, you know, that enhanced messaging, so.
I, you know, I think it's important to reiterate, though, that, you know, this is something that we would certainly like to have. We've been talking about it for a number of years, but it's not, it's not like a, you know, sky is falling situation. I mean, there's pros and cons to everything that we do, especially when it comes to spending money. This would provide us with that ability of getting messages out, as Ken had mentioned, sort of on the fly and to be able to change it on the fly without having to, you know, get a couple of guys out there or a guy out there or a gal to make those changes. And then you're very limited as to what you can say. That being said, you know, we're going to continue to operate whether we have an electronic sign board out there or not. So, truly, it's one for council to really determine if you want to move forward.
What is the lead time on the sign?
They come and they actually remove the sign. And so, they'll, you know, you may, this goes forward, you may get questions about, you know, why did the city take down the sign? They'll actually come and get the sign. And my understanding is seven to 10 days. We're going to say up to two weeks that the sign would be gone. But it's not terribly long, just a couple of weeks. Once they would get it scheduled, and they haven't given us any indication that they couldn't schedule it right away, so. That would be something that would be worthwhile for us to check to make sure that they're still operational.
You know, the companies we talked to, they did say doing this retro fit was a lot faster for turnaround for us to get signed back.
Owen, this mic, home ear. Did you say that you spoke with the company about scheduling it and they are at least deeming their construction work as critical infrastructure?
No, did not speak to them since all this happened.
Okay, so it may be that at least some of that scheduling is going to be delayed by the state of emergency as well.
Right, and that was the reason for my question. Okay, the reason for my question was if it's a short lead time, then perhaps while all of this is going on, and that is not an essential component. while all of this is going on, and that is not an essential company, we're probably gonna have to wait anyway.
Owen, if a motion was made to simply table this, that would let us bring it back at any future meeting without disturbing the bid or anything else, correct?
Yeah, that wouldn't disturb anything. It would just simply push it to when council was ready to make a decision. And had I thought about the essential service kind of thing, I certainly would have reached out to the company to find out, um, you know, I can't say one way or the other whether they're, they're operational or not at this point. Um, I guess a, a vote to table, you know, we have a meeting in two weeks. Um, you know, that could still be a timely, a timely issue for us, so.
I'd like to make the motion that we disable this matter, uh, so that we have time to consider it for a future meeting.
I'll, I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers? King?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council. I just wanted to add that when we, uh, contact them to see if they are still operational, uh, or not, we'll also clarify, um, you know, the validity of, of the number that they gave us. And, you know, worst-case scenario, uh, we need to, uh, rebid that we can always do that as well and see where they come in.
What do you mean validity?
Well, in case they're-
Valid number.
Well, in case it expires, like, the bid's only good for 30 days.
Okay.
So, okay. Um, in any event, the, um, uh, next item, Mayor, let me just make sure I'm tracking this right, I believe is under the, uh, um, scheduling of, uh, a public hearing for, um, April 20th to discuss the, uh, fiscal year 21 annual operating budget? And so that, that would be my request, obviously.
I, I would go ahead and let's, discussion and make the motion to set, uh, the public hearing, uh, to discuss the 2000, 2021 annual operating budget for April 20th, 2020, and this is council.
I'll second.
Councilmember Shippers? Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. The, this is, uh, Marcus, the city manager, and as I realize we're nearly, um, halfway through, if not greater, we should be advising who we are when we're talking, in case it's folks on the phone, um, because they can't see us. Uh, but, uh, the next item would be, although not legally required, we, we traditionally also, uh, host a public hearing for our capital improvement program. And so, uh, the next request is to schedule a public hearing for April 20th, 2020, uh, to consider the approval of our, uh, fiscal year, uh, uh, 2021 through 2026, uh, capital improvement program.
This is Councilmember King. I would go ahead and make the motion, uh, to schedule for April 20th, 2020, a public hearing regarding considering approval of the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 capital improvement program.
I'll second.
Councilmember Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor and members of the City Council. Uh, moving along, we're now under the, uh, this is Marcus, I'm the city manager. We're now under the adoption of ordinances and resolutions, uh, section of, of our agenda this evening, with the first one being a request, uh, to adopt a resolution, uh, that approves, um, a resolution with the Michigan Water, uh, and Wastewater Agency Response Network for Mutual Aid and Assistance Agreement, uh, or M-WAR, or M-W-W-A-R Response Network, um, is, is their acronym. And so as, uh, as we talked about, or as I briefed the council earlier, uh, this evening with respect to, uh, COVID-19 and our operational update, uh, one of the things that we've been working, uh, very hard on, um, uh, is trying to make sure and ensure that we can continue to provide, um, our core services, uh, no matter what happens, uh, to the community and to the city. Uh, and by putting this agreement in place, um, this provides us with access to, uh, if, if we actually needed it, uh, to professionals that could help us out, uh, if our own professionals otherwise are unable to, uh, to make it into work, uh, into the facilities, uh, that we have that provide us with our drinking water and provide us with the ability of treating our, uh, our wastewater or our sanitary water.
And, and let's serve suspicion, this is, Mr. King? Is that just my echo?
No, I heard it.
Okay. I'd go ahead and make motion to adopt the resolution approving Michigan Water Waste Water Response Network Assistance Agreement.
Support. Shippers, support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mayor, members of the City Council. The, uh, next item is a resolution authorizing issuance of Michigan Transportation Fund Bonds, uh, Series 2020, and I'm going to, uh, kick this to Owen to give the quick update.
All right, this is Owen. Um, thanks, Marcus. The, um, this is what we, we discussed briefly, uh, both in the work session and, um, tonight, a little bit in the budget public hearing. So, uh, the resolution that is, is before you tonight authorizes the issuance of up to $4.5 million of, of capital improvement bonds, uh, to pay the cost of certain capital improvements for major and local street system and related improvements. Um, and so, uh, this resolution is required. It's pursuant act number 175 of 1952, which basically, uh, authorizes us to use the Act 51 funds, um, uh, to pledge those to pay back this debt. Um, this resolution in no way at this point binds us to issue $4.5 million, uh, of bonds, um, and, uh, it doesn't, um, sell the bonds to anyone or anything like that. Uh, this is, though, the final required step that the council would have to take, uh, pursuant to the issuance of the bonds. Um, after this would be, uh, an RFP, uh, would be issued, and banks and other financial institutions would have a chance to, uh, to bid on the purchase of those bonds. Um, that would be next. We can, we can take these to market very quickly if we so choose, uh, or we can, uh, again, as we've talked about a couple of times even at this meeting tonight, uh, we can choose to, uh, to sit on it a little while as we wait to see kind of how this whole thing, uh, this whole thing will pay out. These bonds are 15-year bonds, uh, which is important because that's, uh, less than what the life of the underlying asset that the bonds will be used to, to construct, uh, are. And so we're not, uh, we're not issuing debt that's longer than what the asset, uh, will be, uh, so that, that's something that we wanna, uh, to point out as well. Um, you know, there's nothing else really, uh, I think remarkable, I guess, that would, um, that, that I guess I would want to point out. Um, as we discussed in the budget work session tonight, I think it'll be incumbent on us all, uh, to be very, very careful in the use of our dollars. Um, we can't completely stop, uh, doing what we're required to do. Uh, one of those foundational requirements is to make sure that our streets, uh, are safe and passable. Um, you've seen the schedule of streets over the next few years as we talked through the capital improvement budget process, and, and I think we would all agree, um, that, that the require, or that the improvements are very, very much needed. Um, and, you know, the, the current state of things, um, causes pause, I think, causes pause for me, um, causes pause for all of you as we talk about these, uh, these processes. You know, we do have, um, some projections, uh, that are, are completed, and we've worked with, um, bond counsel, financial advisor, uh, to work on, uh, to, to help with those and to pro, provide us some comfort. Um, we do have our, uh, financial advisor, Warren Kramer, on the line, um, should you wanna ask some, some market-specific questions. He's, he's, uh, been an expert in the field for a long time and helped us on, on, uh, essentially all of our, our bond issuances, uh, at least since I've been around for 20 years, so, and before that. So, um, you know, legally, Mike can help, uh, financially, uh, Warren can, can speak to some things if you choose. Um, you know, I guess to provide some comfort, as we talked about in the work session, um, you know, we, uh, we can't take on more debt than we can afford to pay back, and there are some questions on what is gonna happen with some of those revenues and how long they will take to come back. Uh, my recommendation tonight would be to pass the resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds. Um, if you wanted to put something in the motion to, um, you know, to, to urge, urge caution and analysis, and, um, as we, as we move forward, um, you can, um, even require some kind of, of response from us as we move this forward on, on what the, um, what the final rate and amount and term. I'm happy to provide you projection data that, that, uh, that shows and confirms, um, at least with the information as best that we know it, and we can run some scenarios as well on that, um, that we can afford to pay it back. Um, I, I assure you that I'm very conservative, um, with that. I don't, I don't like it. Um, however, it is a tool, and in this case, will enable us to get these projects done, um, without jeopardizing our financial future. So, I don't think I need to say anymore on that. Um, we're just kind of ready to listen, I guess, for questions that you may have. So, Steve, yeah?
Uh, this is Councilmember King. Um, in, Owen, you had said in our work session, I think it's good for the public to know, and ignorant on some of the, right now, perform these projects, we need these critical funds to get especially our worst streets done. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct, yes. We could do a small amount, um, but nowhere near enough to take care of, of even the worst of the worst here.
Okay, in, in relation to that, right now with the market where it's at, potentially the city would be able to get the debt through the bonds to pay the lowest amount to, for payback, making payback more feasible at this stage if we borrow the, or we issue the bonds at this stage.
In terms of the financing costs and interest rates and things, yeah, I would say it's, uh, you know, it remains, uh, you know, a, a solid market. Um, and, you know, in speaking through this at length with, um, with Mr. Kramer last week, um, you know, we're, we're, estimating or anticipating, you know, in the range of 2.5%, um, even from some local interests, I think, uh, as far as the banks are concerned. And so, I, you know, I think that the timing is good on, on securing some funds, you know, and I think that is a really good point of information, um, to have, uh, out there. Um, you know, the prudence, I think, is, is in, um, settling on an amount that we do now. So, um, you know, Mr. Kramer and I talked about last week, you know, doing some now, planning for some, you know, a year or two from now, once the dust settles a little bit, um, the thing that does is, is it, it doubles your issuance costs, essentially. Um, so, you know, you gotta weigh that in there as well. Um, but yeah, this, this is a, is a good, a good market as far as affordability on, on total cost of financing, for sure.
And, and the last part of my question, Owen, is you've looked at it with our financial people to be able to know, you're gonna, going to be able to analyze the cost of doing those critical street projects to decide how much needs to be issued now. However, you're required to come to us as council to give you authority, and we'd be giving you authority for probably more than you're gonna wanna end up issuing. But that's just the standard way it's done. Is that, did I say that in a fair way?
Yeah, so this is Owen again. Um, I think you said that perfectly. So, you know, you always wanna make sure at this point, at this stage, that you have authorized a sufficient level to do, uh, the work that you want. And so as we move closer and, you know, uh, maybe nail down some numbers, uh, or, you know, last minute, if, if, you know, the market gets even more advantageous at times, you would, you would say, well, instead of $3.5 million, we're gonna, we're gonna do the max because financing just went from 2.5 to, you know, 195 or something, and so let's, let's bite the bullet now because funds will never be more affordable. Yeah, and then, you know, trusting that you'll have the, the revenues then to support your debt. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Good point.
Okay, if there aren't any more, uh, questions or discussions, would someone like to make a motion?
This is Councilmember King. I'm trying to find my blue line. We're saying if someone else has it in front of them, I defer. I'd like to make a motion. Make a, adopt, adoption authorization of Michigan Transportation Fund Bonds Series 2020.
Councilmember Shippers supports it.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Allen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, everybody. Uh, much appreciated, uh, discussion and, and, and moving on to our, uh, next item, uh, it's in reference to the 2020 Wheel Loader, uh, recommendation. Uh, we, uh, held a bid opening, uh, for the purchase or the lease of, uh, Wheel Loader for the Public Works Department. Uh, this is a very critical component, uh, of our snow removal, uh, operations. Uh, we received, um, uh, six, uh, bids essentially, uh, uh, maybe five from, because one's from two different companies with two different options. Uh, our recommendation, uh, this evening, however, is to go with, um, with the lowest one, uh, received, which is to Alta Equipment, and our recommendation this evening is also, uh, to, uh, go with the five-year annual lease. Uh, it's important to note that our original, um, uh, plan, uh, was to basically buy out for $110,000, uh, the 2015 Volvo Loader, uh, that we, that we have currently. Um, that loader, while it's in good condition, is, however, starting to, uh, show some signs, uh, of, of needed repairs. And our second unit that we also, uh, rely on is a 2006 Case Loader, uh, that unfortunately has had to have been taken out of service, uh, due to several, uh, needed maintenance issues over time. Uh, once, once that, once that did take place, uh, the decision on, on looking, um, at, at really having two fully operational loaders, uh, became very evident. Uh, Volvo- Volvo has offered us at the moment a five-year, what they call premier warranty on both units. The typical cost of the warranty is $4,500 each. However, they're offering us this five-year warranty for just simply $4,500 for both. And what that basically means is that by having both of these units leased and then having this five-year warranty on both of them, it will potentially avoid any type of significant repair costs for either unit during the entire term of the lease. Based on the factors that I had stated, it is the recommendation this evening that we adopt a resolution that approves the five-year lease for the two wheel loaders from Alta Equipment of Traverse City with financing through the Kansas State Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $34,500 per year, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents accordingly. We do have funds available in the stores and garage fund as well.
Can I? Is, you know, I think here we are again with, you know, a major capital item during difficult times. I think there's a unique distinction in this one, and, you know, not to make light of that, but I think it's important to note on this one that without doing something, we were down to one loader, with our activities that we require is not an option for us with the amount of things that we have to do. So the plan, and it was in the CIP and in the budget, was to buy out the $110,000 lease. I think where this one is unique is instead of this requiring us to spend $110,000 now, you know, $110,000 gets us through three years of the lease. So we only have to spend $35,000 now for that first year for two of them, two brand-new, fully-warranted units. And then based on the estimated value of the one that we'll be selling, which is the case, should cover, should completely cover year one of the lease costs through auction. So I think there's some unique opportunities that we have right now with the Volvos. And also wanted to point out that this is the exact company and financing institution that we leased one for the last five years, and we've been very pleased with the Volvo unit. So just wanted to add that.
So that makes a lot of sense to me. I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a five-year lease for two wheel loaders from Alta Equipment of Traverse City, Michigan, with financing through Kansas State Bank of Manhattan, Kansas, in the amount of $34,500 per year, and to authorize the mayor and city to execute these documents.
I support.
Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
No.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you again, Mayor, and members of the city council. I'm just getting my paperwork here caught up. The last item that we have for presentation this evening is the request for adoption of a resolution providing for the continued basic operations of the city in suspending late fees and shut-offs during the state of emergency. And so I think it's important, again, to reflect back on the various updates that I had provided earlier this evening regarding COVID-19. Additionally, as previously reported through email, at least to the city council, we have been making sure that we're in compliance with the various executive orders that have been coming out of the governor's office in Lansing. This resolution provides a formal structure or framework, and I'm just going to do my best to try to summarize this. So this is in reference to the executive order 2020 dash 21. That order, by the way, currently expires a week from today unless, of course, it is extended, which we don't know yet. I do believe there may be another brief by our governor this week, possibly on Thursday, and we'll likely know sometime then if it's going to be extended. But pursuant to 20 dash 21, the city will continue operating and providing necessary governmental activities performed by critical infrastructure workers in person and remotely. The city's workers may perform governmental activities by remote access, including video conferences, telephone conferences, and email communication, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act and Executive Order 2020 dash 15. That order did provide flexibility within the Open Meetings Act insofar that we could have this meeting, as for instance, done online. Additionally, water and sewer late fees on payments beginning with the March 2020 billing cycle, and all shut-offs associated therewith are hereby suspended. Water and sewer service to any occupied residence, where such services have been shut off due to non-payment, shall be restored so long as reconnection would not create a risk to public health, as an example, due to cross-contamination. If the city does determine that any occupied residences within its service area have had water or sewer service shut off for any reason other than non-payment or that reconnection would create a risk to public health, the city will make, the city shall make best efforts to remedy those conditions and restore services to such occupied residences as soon as possible. As a part of the governor's executive order, no later than April 12th, 2020, the city does need to submit a report to the State Emergency Operations Center containing a whole host of information regarding what we have done to determine what occupied residences within the city's service area, don't have water service, what we're doing in terms of making sure that, you know, they don't have it because of a non-payment. And so there's a whole reporting requirement that we have to comply with. Additionally, during the state of emergency and until further action by the city council, the resolution advises that the city manager may impose, modify, or authorize exceptions to any of our existing city policy or established practice as necessary to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So as a, for instance, if it gets to a point where we believe we need to close our playgrounds down, I would have the authority of doing that. I, of course, would need to brief city council as to that type of action, and certainly city council always has the ability of reversing or modifying any measures that are taken. The resolution would continue to be in place until the termination of the state of emergency under Section 3 of Executive Order 2020 dash 4, or by any further resolution of the city council.
This is Councilmember King. I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution providing for the continued basic operations of the city and pending fees and shut-offs during the state of emergency.
Councilman Allenbaugh supports.
Councilmember Allenbaugh?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay. At this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment.
I'll try to see if I can hear me.
We can hear you.
Just a very brief, but a very large thank you to all the city staff for working--
Could you please provide your name for the council, please?
Yes. My name is Gerald Dear.
Thank you.
Just want to express a thank you to all the city staff for working together during this terrible time that we're all going through. I know we're all going through issues that we'd never have been faced before, and some of us, obviously, weren't around for World War II, but I managed to find my ration stamps for 1944, so they're available if I need them. But we're hoping that everybody can stay well, and we soon can get back to regular activities that we all have. The sooner the better. And we feel sorry for the schools that had to close and the graduates of high school that cannot go through graduation right now. And we understand why this has to be done, but right now, we all got to work together. So we're thankful for everybody working together and doing what we can to get through this time that we haven't, none of us have gone through before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order if anyone has anything this evening.
Oh, sure. Commissioner Allenbaugh's here. Hang in there, my fellow kaddelikas. We'll beat this. We'll get back to normal on these days, soon, we hope. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Shippers? I just want to make sure to thank Marcus and Owen and Jeff and all you guys that are making this possible and that are keeping things working under these extraordinary circumstances. The way you've been able to pivot and just go with what is happening is extremely impressive. So thank you so much, and keep up the good work, everybody.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care. Be safe.
Yeah.